I'd like to welcome everyone to the May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four Mobile County Commission Meeting. Call the meeting to order if you would please stand for the invocation this morning will be given by Reverend Rebecca Abel Lamar from the Government Street Presbyterian Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It is my honor to bring greetings from the Government Street Presbyterian Church and to begin our proceedings with prayer this morning. Let us pray. God of grace and God of glory, on your people pour your power. It is with humble hearts that we come before you, first with thanksgiving and gratitude, and also with prayers for wisdom, for guidance in all that we do. We pray for your blessing on our county, this place that we call home, and I ask for your blessing upon each of our commissioners and all the servants here who serve our county. I pray that you would continue to guide them as they make Mobile County a just and peaceful place where all can thrive as we live and work here. We pray all these things with grateful and humble hearts, particularly as we end this Memorial Day weekend, and we are filled with gratitude for those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our country. We pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I don't see any resolutions, so we'll move right into speakers. Cherie, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have three people who have signed up to speak this morning, and each of them has been apprised of the rules of speaking to the commission, which is that they have five minutes, and they should state their name and address for the record. And so the first is Mr. Frank Harris, Jr. He's a resident of Dawes Lake Road, and he would like to address the commission about a traffic calming device in his area.
About what?
A traffic calming device, and he has prepared a packet which I've placed at each one of your seats. Mr. Harris, you have five minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Frank A. Harris, Jr., and I live at Dawes Lake Boulevard in the Dawes Lake subdivision there. I'm having a real, real big problem. The problem is there's so much traffic coming through there, I can't hardly get to my mailbox. I had a gentleman to visit me a few weeks ago. He almost got hit. He's a blind person. He's legally blind. Whenever we ready to leave and stuff like that, we almost get hit. Matter of fact, I need some type of request with that, some maybe some speed bumps or something like that. I'm not sure what need to be done, but something need to be done. I live in a sharp curve, like I ten, George White Tony, it's simple that. I need something to be done about that. I've talked to the commission office several times, no one had, I called me back. Also, I've talked to one in the highway track department. I'm still having that same problem. Very dangerous. I need something to be done right away. I've been working on this about three years, believe it or not. No, no problem has not been resolved so far. What should I do next? Is something I'm doing wrong? What do I need to do to get this taken care of?
Well, it's not that anyone hasn't called you back. I think you and I have spoken on the phone several times, and I know that Brad has been out several dozen times, maybe to this area.
I don't think I spoke to you, but I just talked to one of your system one time. I even had to come down there. I just waited. The last time I had to want to get the public affairs involved in this. This is just unacceptable. I'm a senior citizen. I don't want to get killed or get hurt, especially a blind person to come visit me.
Well, Brad or Ricky, I, I think we've addressed this issue, and I think the, the, the issue is, is a number one, that it's a residential subdivision, and, and we've done traffic stuff. Brad, do you want to? Ricky or Brad, do you want to, or Kim? I'm sorry, Kim, about what we've done and how many times we've been out and tried to resolve Mr. Harris's issue?
Okay. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I know that Brad Whitman, our traffic engineer, has been out several times and visited, and he has made some changes to the signing as much as we can make. We, the speed limit is twenty miles an hour. We have done an advisory reduction to ten miles an hour. We have signed everything appropriately in accordance with our guidelines. At this time, the county does not use speed humps or bumps or lumps, and it's, it's a situation that we see over and over in the county that it goes back to speeding. And the, the answer would be possibly better, more patrols. I just found out this morning, there's a possibility of a grant through the sheriff's office that could possibly increase the patrols. But Brad has been out there multiple times and had conversations with Mr. Harris. I have never spoken with Mr. Harris myself, but I have been out and visited the site with Brad, looked at what Brad recommended and has implemented, and we have done, we have done everything to make the road appropriate, and it comes back to the speakers.
Well, and Mr. Harris?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's not true. I only met with Brad one time, and matter of fact, there was no street, no, or no stop sign, yield sign. He did put that up there. And also he put a ten miles an hour sign by my house in driveway there. But that's still, it's not a speeding trying to safety problem. That's what I'm trying to tell you. And you look at that brochure I gave you, it's a picture of my mailbox is brick, and I was told one time when I moved the mailbox, I can't move the mailbox. What is for me to do then? It's not a speeding problem, it's a safety problem. I keep telling you that. And Brad also knows that too, matter of fact. I, I even gave some pictures about three or four times, different pictures, and I don't know what happened to them. Pictures, matter of fact.
I've, I've gotten the emails from the pictures.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was out here about a week ago. That's how I found about having a, a meeting down here, that you have the commission meeting every so often. That's how I was able to come down here through the public affairs department, told me that. Now, this is presented to me, I don't have five minutes to speak. Nobody didn't tell me that. I put all this package together. This is my fourth package I've put together, and I haven't talked to Brad for one time, and he knows it too, matter of fact. And when he came by my house, he didn't park in front of my house or my driveway. He parked around the corner. That just show how bad it is. Matter of fact, when I tried to go in my yard, I have to have, I got, I got these cones here, see these cones here? When I'm ready to leave, I had to put these cones up like this. I, nobody else will have to do nothing like that. I can guarantee you that, for safety. I don't want to get hit, and I don't want my person to get killed, the person that's blind. He's legally blind. Looking at package, it's a picture of him going to the mailbox. Something got to be done.
Has there been any contact with the sheriff's department for increased patrols?
Has.
There has?
I mean, I've, I've had the sheriff's office, when they worked their grants numerous times. I mean, it's, you're, this is really only a couple hundred feet from Dawes Road, where they entrance, it's an entrance.
There's always three houses there, basically. I'm, I'm the only one that's really affected that, because I had to go in and go out of there. I've had guests come to my house, they almost get hit, matter of fact. Something got to be done. I know I keep saying about the county that they don't do certain things, but something need to be done. You got to step up the game some kind of way. I don't, I'm not a subject matter expert, but I know something can be done. You went to like get killed or somebody get hurt or something like that, before you do something? It don't make sense.
Have you ever spoken with the property owners association about clearing out the common area where it is hiding your driveway?
Well, now, Brad told me, Whitman told me that it was too high, the, the, the big tree, the eye over there. I went out there, it's only twelve inches tall. Anybody can see around twelve inches tall. I took a measure out there and measured it myself. That's not the problem. It's not. It was a poor design, and the first thing I needed, the county needed to do something about that, because it was a poor design. I'm not asked to do a whole lot. I even, I asked, I put a light out there, a light, like you got on Johnson Road there blinking. Brad told me they couldn't do that unless the homeowner so can pay for it. Didn't you tell me that? And I said, well, okay, they ain't hardly want to pay for that. Now, he didn't ask me that I want to pay for it. Is it stuff for me to pay for it maybe? Something need to be done about that. Something need to be done. Okay, well, I guess I'm finished now then.
Are you, did, are you, did you just say that you're willing to pay for a flash?
I may, I may consider doing it if the county had the money. He didn't give me that option to do so. I, I can't live there like that. It's too dangerous. I've been living there eight years now. It's too dangerous.
Well, thank you for coming down, and I'll have some more conversation with Brad.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker today is Ms. Felicia Johnson, and she would like to address the commission regarding the court police.
My name is Felicia Johnson. I live at six zero zero one O'Shea Road Apartment Q one thirty-two. That's Mobile, Alabama. Just to give you a brief history, I am a former warrant clerk at the Mobile County Sheriff's Department from the old county courthouse. At that time, I had to come before the commission seeking some accountability for safety issues that we were having in that particular courthouse. One was there was an attempt to kidnap me from the building. Second occasion, I had two inmates who entered into my office without any notification or me even knowing that they were in the office with me after business hours. And you know, we worked in anonymous places after hours when the court was closed. At that time, they were under the supervision of Sergeant Carlos Thompson, and this was a ranking administrator that attempted to kidnap me from this building. I had a third incident where someone entered into the office area, but due to the prevention of the door being locked, was not able to enter into the office, and that was at two AM in the morning hours. I am here today because I have allowed them through these twenty years, and I'm back here today, to do all of their investigations. The investigation on the kidnapping, when I found out who the investigator was on that case, it was the individual's son. That case went nowhere. Today, I continue to have harassment and bullying from within the establishment. I just recently, I submitted two complaints to you all as to what I was, am referring to today, and that is the officers for at least the past year one has consistently harassed me with different gestures when I come to the courthouse to handle my legal affairs. Smelling my keys, that's just not acceptable. I go to the other side to avoid this person. I have another officer making statements such as, you bring the money, I'll bring my one bullet. I have no idea who this person is. It's not acceptable. And speaking to the lieutenant who was handling this case, who failed to initially take a complaint, I had to come back to this establishment and speak with the sergeant to take this complaint, to make it legitimate. He's giving me a totally different scenario of what the videos are showing. And if that is the case, then that means these videos have been edited in some way, because our encounters of what happened are just not the same. So I have made a request to this commission to intervene, to take some accountability for the authority of the seats you have been elected to sit in, to bring some type of prevention and investigation into these matters. I understand from other workers in this courthouse that I am not the first person that these type of incidents has happened to, but they're not making reports about it. They're just voicing it to the people they're coming in contact with while they're here handling their, their legal matters. So I would ask that, other than advising me to get an attorney, to which I cannot afford, I would ask, what is it that you would advise at this point?
Jay, could you, could, could you get with Chief Doobie?
Yes, I did. I made a request to see the video myself. And, and again, that was denied to me. That was told, I was just told that I needed to get an attorney. But there again, we have these one-sided issues. I'm very concerned still about matters in detail that I just, you know, are not publicly to be talked about. But the matter of this particular person making kidnapping attempts on me, and I have been fighting for this behind the scene all these years, and I'm totally just given a lot of illusions and illusions that are reality as well. Several different types of attacks that I get consistently, and this is just one of them. There is a sense of entitlement from these male officers as a black female to me and just as a woman. There's no need to smell my keys. There's no need to make the former gestures that were made. There was no need that when I walk through the gates and someone beeps before me, a black male, and I beep behind him to say that that's two for one today, and then make the comment, you bring the money and I'll bring the bullet. I mean, I, who, who does he think I am? I, I don't even know this person.
Your attempted kidnapping was in the old courthouse?
Yes, it was. And it was by Chief Mayo.
Was that investigated by the sheriff's office or mobile?
It was investigated by, I think someone, I think he worked in the DA's office, which was his son, Michael Mayo, and also Tony Gubel, who was a witness at the scene.
Jay, would, if y'all have Ms. Johnson's contact information, can you? Will you give us some time to look into this matter and have some conversation with Tim and Jay, and someone will be in touch with you?
I hope so, because no one out of all the complaints and appearances I've made, not one investigator has ever talked to me, interviewed me. It's just, I'm a problem. I do know this person has a history and a suspicion of murder for prostitutes, to which I am not. That has not been my lifestyle. Very confused on that. So I would like to speak to someone and have this bullying harassment stopped, and preferably, I would prefer some charges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker today is Mr. Danny Corte with the Mobile Sports Authority, and he would like to address the commission regarding the sportsplex activity.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, Danny Corte, Executive Director of the Mobile Sports Authority. From past conversations at our board meetings and other citizens, and even a conversation I had with Commissioner Hudson about the goings on at the sportsplex, I, I thought it'd be best just to come and give you a brief update of what we see going on. Quite frankly, in a sentence, it's a very busy complex. If you remember when the complex was built, it was all around soccer. Soccer, soccer is all you've heard. But what we have found out, because, and even though right now it's only three fields, there's actually other sports that, that we've been holding out there with our partners AFC Mobile. And just to give you an idea of what that is, I don't know if you've ever heard of an ultimate tournament. Basically, how, how we grew up, they were called frisbees. An ultimate tournament is sort of like a, a football game with a frisbee. And we've had, we've had several of those out there, and they've been growing every year. They started out small, but it's, it's a unique event. But because we have the fields and, and the grass fields, it, it, that's, that's one of those events that have grown. Another that, that we've talked about is flag football. We had a, a good size, a decent size for our first one, United Flag Football National Qualifier back in April of twenty-two was our first one. What that did, there were thirty teams that came in, but what that did, that set us up in conversations to have the national tournament here once we get enough fields up and running. We need more than three fields. We probably need seven to ten. And of course, we all know that ten is where we want to head. So what we're trying to do is get these events to come to Mobile to see what we have, to say, here are our plans for the future. And they say, well, when you get your fields, call us, because we have bigger tournaments to bring in. Of course, soccer, we have all our different sized soccer tournaments. But another sport that's been kind of interesting, that I didn't know a lot about up to five years ago, is lacrosse. And there's been a, a huge growth of lacrosse in the south. Lacrosse has always been big in the north and northeast, in the Midwest, but not so much in the south. But what you've seen lacrosse grow with our private organizations and, and even our high schools, and eventually, I believe lacrosse is going to be a AHSAA sanctioned event. So that's growing too. And this past, let's see, it was April twentieth and twenty-first, we had a sixty-eight team lacrosse tournament with fifty-four of those teams being from out of town. We really have not had those kind of tournaments before, but it just goes to show if you have the facility, which, which again, I commend the commission, Commissioner Hudson especially for, for pushing this. And, and, and so you could just see, the, the more facilities you have, the greater economic impact. Basically, those five events that we've had, that I'm just mentioning, about a million dollar economic impact to our area. So it's, it's pretty impressive. And of course, we're going to repeat these events and hopefully grow those too. We have the aquatic center, obviously, hopefully about to, I guess in final design, and about to maybe break ground soon, along with the, the new golf course, along with West Mobile County Parks upgrades, with Chickasaw, Chickasaw Bogue Park reopening. Future's good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Danny. As you know, we, we revised plans on moving forward with construction at the soccer complex. We decided to go ahead and complete four more fields. Initially, we were going to take the three that we have now out of operation and, and, and add some practice fields while we remeet, did some remediation work. But we've decided to go ahead and complete four new fields and, and keep the three fields in use also. So, and that would allow us to continue with adding fields and then go back when we've finished all of the fields and do the remediation work at the end. And I think so, based on what I, and, and I think this is very good news, because about a year from now, we hope to be finished with those four additional fields, and so that will have, give us the seven fields that we need, and hopefully, we can bring in even more and bigger tournaments at that time.
Thank you. So, and I think the commission and, and the city too, as we expand our facilities for, you know, sports tourism, as you've probably read, is just a growing part, a major growing part of the overall tourism industry, and it's not going anywhere. In fact, if anything, it might be, it, it will probably end up continuing to be one of the fastest growing parts, fastest growing part of the overall tourism industry, and, and I, I just thank you for your leadership.
Well, thank you for yours and for all that you do to keep bringing these tournaments in. We know it impacts our economy.
Thank you, Danny.
No more speakers.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Good morning, commissioners. Asking to consider the following. One, approve list of claims.
So moved. Second?
Two, hold public hearings so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
Public hearing is now in session. Are there any comments for or against? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed.
Three, adopt resolution authorizing request of probate court to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus property, and donate miscellaneous pens and highlighters that were returned from precincts after previous elections to local school systems, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved. Second?
Four, authorize advertising for bids for Afriktown Heritage House drainage improvements.
So moved. Second?
Five, authorize advertising for bids for practice filled lighting at Fort Tanner Williams Community Park.
So moved. Second?
Six, approve renewal of professional services agreement with JGBAG relating to inspection services for a second one-year term.
So moved. Second?
Seven, authorize request for proposals for consultant services for the coordination and preparation of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-nine consolidated plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development entitlement programs, community development block grant, home and emergency solution grants.
So moved. Second?
Eight, approve service order agreement with Unity Fiber to add a managed router to the recently completed one hundred megabits per second ethernet connection between service addresses at South Broad Street and St. Joseph Street. This completes the work approved by the Mobile County Commission and the March eleventh meeting minutes, agenda item twenty-five, with no additional cost.
So moved. Second?
Nine, approve amending annual appropriation contract with the Center for the Living Arts doing business as Alabama Contemporary Art Center to increase the contract amount from one hundred and ten thousand to one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred. The additional funds in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred for the exhibition Threads of Disintegration and Artist Dinner, honoring the life and work of Peaky M.M. Bass. The additional funds are to be divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Ten, approve appropriation contract with the Senior Citizen Services doing business as Via Health, Fitness, and Enrichment Center in the total amount of five thousand for its Cheers to the Years gala. Funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Eleven, approve appropriation contract with Youth on the Winning Side in the amount of seven thousand five hundred from District One Education Funds for its youth music workshops and scholarship program.
So moved. Second?
Twelve, approve appropriation contract with the Hispanic American Business Association of the Gulf Coast in the amount of forty thousand from District One Commission Funds for operational expenses.
So moved. Second?
Thirteen, approve appropriation contract with the PACT Players doing business as the PACT Theater Company Foundation in the total amount of three thousand for its summer camp scholarship program with funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Fourteen, adopt resolution authorizing joint purchasing agreements with municipalities for purchases off the county's annual bids for municipalities as follows.
So moved. Second?
Fifteen, approve joint purchasing agreements with municipalities to pay the cost of all materials purchased off the county's annual bids for municipalities as follows.
So moved. Second?
Sixteen, approve agreement among Mobile County, Mobile County Sheriff's Office, and the City of Chickasaw to house City of Chickasaw prisoners in the amount of fifty dollars per day.
So moved. Second?
Seventeen, approve contract amendment number three with Thompson Engineering for Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan to add Task Four Building Assessment of the Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association Legacy Center.
So moved. Second?
Eighteen, approve change order number two with Rogers and Willard for Levert Building Wall Repairs. The change order will decrease the contract by one thousand two hundred, and the new contract total will be in the, in, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-four cents.
So moved. Second?
Nineteen, award bid to Tindall Construction for James T. Strickland Youth Center intake renovations for their total bid in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Twenty, authorize subrecipient agreement with the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama for the term of April first, two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of up to thirty thousand of community development block grant funds to provide comprehensive six-week youth enrichment summer programs at sites in the town of Mount Vernon and the city of Citronelle that were, will serve low to moderate income youth living in those jurisdictions.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-one, authorize adopting revision to two thousand twenty-three park rules and updating rates for RV camping at Mobile County River Delta Marina and Campground.
Question on this one. I know that, that we've had some conversations about revising some of the allowable camping with pop-up campers. This, I noticed this does not include that. Is that coming later?
There were some changes, Commissioner. Good morning, to the pop-up section, and I just lost the, the page. It adds, it, it makes it where some pop-ups are allowed.
Okay, okay. I, I read over the information. I, I guess I just missed that.
I'm happy to get with you and show it to you after the meeting later today.
Okay. I, I trust you. I just wanted to make sure that that was included.
We did. We did change, make that change and some other minor changes, just to help the staff maintain a family-friendly environment at the parks.
Very good. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-two, approve agreement for grant funds approved in the September 25th minutes for the Community Traffic Safety Program through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for overtime of traffic safety enforcement for the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, Hot Spot and Pair Driving Program, and the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over, requested by Southwest Regional Highway for law enforcement agencies as follows.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-three, approve Change Order Number Three with SC Stagner Contracting for the Isom Clemmon Memorial Civil Rights Park. This change order will increase the contract by $53,938.10 and increase the contract time by 149 calendar days. The new contract amount is $1,475,560.8. This amount exceeds the previously obligated funding by $15,053.33, which will be paid from Cost Center 26.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-four, approve contract between the Mobile County Commission and ETM for ongoing Cartograph Asset Management Professional Support Services in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for the term of one year.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-five, approve amendment to the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan approved August 1st, 2022 to increase award for Escataba Area Water Storage Tank and Water Main from $1,639,900 to $1,839,900.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-six, approve sponsorship agreement with We Matter Community Association in the amount of $2,000 from District One Education Funds for its Alabama Gulf Coast Environmental Justice Summit 2024.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-seven, adopt resolution to declare the parcels of real property located at 2200 Suzie B. Ansley Street surplus as the county no longer needs the real property for governmental use, pending legal review.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-eight, approve authorization of the transfer of the county-owned parcels of real property located at 2200 Suzie B. Ansley Street to Afriktown Redevelopment Corporation by statutory warranty deed, closing costs to be paid from Cost Center 45, pending legal review.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-nine, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved. Second?
Thirty, approve renewal of software agreement with Unity Fiber under the current State of Alabama contract for security software and multi-factor authentication in the total amount of $148,618.34 for the Mobile County Commission.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-one, approve three-year chiller service agreements with Train US under the current purchasing cooperative for the locations as follows.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-two, approve 36-month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation under the current State of Alabama contract for one Sharp copier in the amount of $137.53 per month for the electronics department.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-three, approve right-of-entry agreement with Victor Crawford as an owner of the real property located at 1407 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue for the purpose of inspection of the building located upon the property.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-four, approve preliminary and final plat of Kate Kyle Subdivision and preliminary and final plat of Peru Place.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-five, recommend ascending to the interim county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval for the preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval as follows for Johnson Ranch Phases One and Two.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-six, recommend ascending to the interim county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval for the preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval as follows for Westlake Village.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-seven, adopt resolution approving preliminary engineering right-of-way and construction agreement for Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program II project with the State of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for intersection improvements at State Route 193 and Fowl River Road, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the resolution and agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-eight, approve final plat of Beverly Gardens Unit Four and authorize the interim county engineer to sign the plat and to update streets in the private road inventory as follows. These streets have been constructed to a paved private road standard and certified by the developer's professional engineer.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-nine, authorize interim county engineer to update the street in the private road inventory as follows. This street has been constructed to a paved road, paved private road standard and certified by the developer's professional engineer.
So moved. Second?
Forty, approve setting speed limits for roads, segments of roads, and subdivisions as follows.
So moved. Second?
Forty-one, approve functional reclassifications of roads as follows.
So moved. Second?
Forty-two, approve functional classifications of roads as follows.
So moved. Second?
Forty-three, approve intergovernmental agreement between Mobile County and the City of Mobile for street resurfacing west of Cody Road between Old Shell Road and Dickens Ferry Road, with the county performing resurfacing work and the city appropriating $18,848 for asphalt materials.
So moved. Second?
And commissioners, we have two add-ons this morning. Add-on number one, approve letter of support for the Alabama Port Authority for a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Program to expand the interchange yard for its railroad and study the impact of portwide growth on its rail operations.
So moved.
Second?
The same.
Two, approve letter of support for the Alabama Port Authority for a grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Ports Initiative, which focuses on deploying zero emissions technology at ports nationwide.
So moved. Second?
Forty-four, commission announcements and/or comments?
None. Yeah, I think we have an indigent care board meeting.
And I know we are going into executive session.
Yes, let's just certify that now. That'd be the pleasure of the commission. Commissioner, I'd ask that the commission consider going to executive session this morning after this indigent care board meeting. We think for two reasons. One is to talk about economic development matters. And the second part of the executive session, talk about potential for threatened litigation, depending on how the commission responds to certain factual situations. I would certify these are both appropriate reasons going to executive session with the Alabama Open Meetings Act. And further so certify the same. It's a lawyer license practice law in the state of Alabama. I would estimate those two together at least an hour, maybe more. I don't think there's any reason at the end of executive session to come out and vote on anything that I will present to you during the executive session. If you can recess and adjourn after the executive session, then you can do your indigent care board meeting.
Need to poll us on that?
It'd be a roll call vote, Mr. Kerr.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And then you can do your indigent care.
We're going to adjourn first?
You can do your indigent care now, and then you won't have to come back.
Well, we need to adjourn from the commission.
No, we're recessing. This is the recessed meeting.
A recess, okay, so we're in recess.
Yeah, we can recess the meeting.
That's right, and then you can do your...
Then do the indigent care, indigent care, okay.
One, approved minutes of the meeting of the April 22nd, 2024 meeting.
So moved. Second?
Two, accept report of the Mobile County Commission of the balance of indigent care fund at April 30th, 2024. Funds available, $139,096.06. A check was received on April 24th, 2024 from the oil and gas taxes to the indigent care fund in the amount of $39,096.06 and deposited on April 26th.
So moved. Second?
Number three, approve request for motion to adjourn until June 24th, 2024.
So moved. Second?
We'll stand in recess and we'll adjourn from executive session, correct?
And if you want to do that now, you don't have to come back yet.
Okay, we'll, okay, so we'll stand adjourned.
Correct.